Going to start the recording at four fifty-nine. Actually, five fifty-nine, sorry about the time zone there. We have. Mr.
Chris is joining right now.
Oh, great. Okay, good.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Robert. All right, it is six P M. So we will begin our Town of Windermere workshop for February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the palindrome. And tonight's workshop topic is feedback from our committees on the boathouses. If you'll join me for the pledge. Thank you, Councilperson Martini, for having the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Righty. So tonight, we're going to have a boathouse use discussion at our January Town Council meeting. Councilperson David suggested that we revisit feedback from several of our committees that include the Long Range Planning Committee, Parks and Recreation, and the Historic Preservation Board. And we wanted to see in terms of discussion that input on how the future use of the boathouses, you know, the feedback from those committees on the the future use of the boathouses as we move forward. So we're going to go ahead and begin. What I'd like to do is get input from each of the council liaisons on their discussions that they had at their various committees. Also, I want to make sure that we leave a good amount of opportunity for any public input as well. So I think what we'll do, council, if you agree, is we'll have the input from the from those council liaisons, then we'll have public input and then we'll have council discussion. Any objection to that direction? All right, see none. I'm going to go ahead and begin with our long-range planning liaison, and that is councilperson David.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So the Long Range Planning Committee had a discussion regarding the use of the boathouses. And that discussion, one of the questions that was asked is if there were no boathouses there now, would we build boathouses? That answer was probably not considering the the restricted access to that area. So with that being said, and with additional discussion of, you know, the history of the boathouses, a motion was put forward by Frank Franz, who made a motion to recommend to retain one of the boathouses as a historic site and remove the remaining boathouses and convert the remaining sites to launch area for no motorized watercraft. Molly Rose seconded the motion. Then we had a little bit of discussion. After that discussion, Mr. Franz modified the motion to retain boathouse number one as the historical boathouse with uses to be decided by the town, and then the remaining boats, boathouses to be removed. There would be a designated area for the launch of non-motorized watercraft and remaining area function as a public park and improved as desired by the town. Molly Rose was amenable to the motion, and the Long Range Planning Board approved that unanimously.
Thank you, Councilperson David. Next, we'll have our Parks and Recreation Recommendation, Council Liaison, David.
Thank you, sir. I see that our minutes from the meeting got put in on top of my liaison report. So they, the the committee met on February tenth, and they had discussed it based on, you know, the council's request. They they still feel firm about their submission, I guess, back in last April before I was assigned as their liaison of doing the lottery system. They feel like that the that way it won't become like all the other parks where there you just you have people coming in and and there's no regulation. This way they'll be regulated by the leases. And and they also felt like them going away, the boathouses, the community would be unhappy because they've been there so long and they're part of the town's history. So they felt like the town taking over and fixing them up and leasing them out and putting them in a lottery system was the way to go.
Thank you, Councilperson David. Anything further from your discussions there at Parks?
And they discussed. Read it. Looking at theirs. But we talked about how much they were leasing that we were what we had discussed about leasing them out. And we had said it was going to range between a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars a month. They were talking about the monthly lease of what it would be, and they also asked how much it would be to fix them up, and I believe Tiny said thirty-five thousand. And then we would also do a three- to four-year lease when we did do the lease as well.
All right. Thank you, Councilperson David. Next is the Historic Preservation Board, Councilperson Williams. You're muted, Andy.
Sorry about that. H B B met this week because of a couple of members that have have resigned. We've been a little bit struggling getting a quorum, but we got a quorum this week. Discuss it at length. Joan Fuglia put up a motion to keep the boathouses, assess what they need. They're leaning towards possibly keeping them empty, but giving a twelve-month kind of waiting period. And then going forward with that. They were more leaning to just leaving them empty and restoring what needed to be done, so they look good.
Was the was the direction to leave them empty for an additional period of time after that twelve months?
Or was that? They were unclear on that. It kind of bounced back and forth. The vote went three-two. So, you know. I think half of the board is amenable to a lease on this. Their their feelings were, one, we really haven't looked at what we're talking about a lot of pieces here. Jumping in and doing a lottery when we really don't have a good assessment of what we have to work with. And they were looking at kind of a cooling off period, trying to dampen some of the feelings. And we discussed, you know, how do you leave them empty and if you if you do go that direction permanently? But they were essentially middle down there, right down the middle of the road on it. We back, we went back and forth for a good hour on this. Tanya, can you have anything to add to that? You were there.
No, other than than they definitely were willing to give it twelve months. They said that potentially, maybe within three to six months, they might feel differently and might might come back with a different recommendation to go forward with something else, but they wanted that cooling off period. They were very close to the situation, so I think they just wanted a cooling off period.
Yeah, but they they felt that we needed to, you know, move forward, let's end the leases, let the town get in there, let's figure out what we have. I mean, that's the other part is we keep discussing about, okay, we've got five boathouses and they have X amount of slips. What what do they actually need? You know, I some are much better than the others and and the ones that are in poor condition. Where do we go with those? So that's that's where they left it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the feedback and the work of all the committees on providing some additional recommendations for council to consider. At this point, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity for public input. I think that
Roger.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Robert.
Roger Galen is here, present at Town Hall, and he signed up to speak.
Okay, why don't we start with with Roger and from there we'll work our way. Anyone who would like to speak that is online on the Zoom, if you'll just raise your virtual hand, we will work our way and call, call you out. When you do speak, make sure you please give your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I am Roger at one twelve twenty-four Oakdale Street, and I'm chairman of the Long Range Planning Committee. So I'd like to make a few personal, mostly comments in support of the motion made by the Long Range Planning Committee. Of course, it was important in our consideration that all the town does, they would own this property. I think from a planning perspective, we noted that it's adjacent to the Cypress New, part of the property, one with a boardwalk. So it's adjacent to that and across the street from Major, um, Park, being called a park. And another thing is my personal view and in part of our discussion, the boathouses then obviously sit on town waterfront property. And they're there for the benefit of a few people, four or five, and not the majority. So I think, as mentioned by Tony, the, if we looked at that property, if there were no boathouses on it, is that the best use for the majority of town residents? And that's kind of the basis of our opinion that the boathouses don't really belong there, serving a few people when they could be serving at least in a passive way. Even if it's just for view, like you have benches there, where people could sit, you could have a walkway along there, a boardwalk, a sign for the Cypress New. One, and of course, we proposed, those are the kind of things that are compatible with a waterfront property that's owned by the town. We suggested the possibility of a launching area, designated area, not using the whole strip, a designated area where people can launch a non-motorized craft like canoes and kayaks, but that's an option, a planning option that could be considered along with other points. My personal view is if the council thinks that the best use of waterfront property for the town are a few boathouses and a small amount of weather generated, then maybe you should look at other property, where property are. Lake Butler, existing boat ramp, there's a pretty sizable park and a lot of the property with street ends on Lake Vessie, Lake Down, there's even a small amount of Moscow Bay. So my question to the council is, would you ever consider putting boathouses on that waterfront property? If not, from a planning perspective, and certainly from a long-range plan, why would you consider putting them on this existing property across from Oldham Park? And as far as timing, there, there seems to be no better time than now to make a decision. I don't agree personally with picking it down broke for a year or two. And the time to take to remove the boathouses, you could do whatever planning you want, doesn't mean you have to immediately put in benches or a walkway or something, but you could certainly be looking at that, if there's no time restraint on that. I think as long as you don't make a decision, nothing's going to happen. And frankly, you all take an honor to remember the task of sitting on the council and looking out for the what is the benefit for the most residents. A lot of time they don't speak of, they're not involved, but they notice things. They notice waterfront property they can walk along, something like a lake down, you have even a swimming area. I personally think that my grandchild in there could pick around in the water. So you've got that ask of thinking about what's best for the majority of the residents as opposed to the benefit of just a few. But that might, however, even if it's by lottery, the few that might own, not own, who have the use of a boathouse is not representing the best interest, I think, of the majority of residents. So thank you for giving me the time to reinforce our motion that we made, and I hope you made the right choice, I think.
Thank you, Roger. Do we have any additional individuals who would like to add public comment?
Mayor, I disabled the chat, so it would just be those that do their hand icon, which I have, I think the first that I saw was
Mr. Oh, I see. So, yep, I scrolled some down now. I see Doug's and Brandy's. Do you see any others, Robert?
Doug Fay, and I think Gerald Fay had his up earlier, so, but right now I just see Doug Kegler, Brandy Haynes, and Doug Fay.
All right, we will, let's go ahead and then we'll start with Doug Kegler and then move to Brandy and then go to Mr. Fay.
Hi, this is Doug Kegler. I reside at three sixteen Palm Street, directly next to the boathouses. I am for keeping the boathouses. I believe that the people that currently own them should keep them, but I know that's a different matter. If they don't keep them, I'm for keeping them as historic structures. We're already having problems with the other two parks around here. And I had firsthand while building my house here, a problem with people using my dock, which is right on the lagoon there, to go back and forth to Bird Island. And we already know the issues there, so I think if somehow with the changes Orange County is doing to Bird Island, we can reduce issues, then obviously we can work on our parks here, but right now adding another park is just going to increase the problem. And my calls into the W P D about problems we're having. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your input. Next is Brandy Haynes.
Hi, this is Brandy Haynes, eight-three-five Oakdale Street. I I don't think, I think keeping them as historic structures, whether they're lottery or not, I I don't think in any way we should tear them down. I think that the town has very few historic structures left that are actually owned by the town, and I think that needs to be protected. I also don't think that that much of this information has got out there, but I see it as a potential of a kind of topic of blowing up when people start to hear that there's a possibility of of tearing them down equivalent to our get rid of the dirt roads kind of thing. I think there's a lot of people that would be very upset by that. I just, I just don't think the information's out there very much. I know I only had a chance to read it myself this morning, so that's my two cents, and I'm sure you guys will hear feedback from other people as they find out about what's talked about tonight.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yep.
Mr. Fay. Was it Doug Fay or it was Doug, right?
Doug has his hand icon up. Doug, if you can unmute, please.
Doug Fay, did you want to provide input?
Yeah, you know what that is?
No, I don't. I don't. I never raised my hand.
Oh, sorry. We're just, yep, all right, be an extra. Not a problem, sir. We just wanted to double check. All right, any any additional public input at this time?
Mayor, that was the hand on the icon on the laptop.
Not a problem. Hey, it's it's better to be extra, extra sure than to leave someone out who wants to provide comments, so. All right, I did, I know that council did receive input from C T Allen earlier today in writing as well as council helped me. There is another individual who wrote late last night as well. I'll find that and we'll add that in. So I know it was copied, so everybody has that input as well. It was pretty.
It was Christie.
Christie Huffman.
Yeah, it was Christie. Yep, it was Ms. Huffman and 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 both of their main takeaways were to make sure to preserve to preserve the actual structures themselves. It was a was a key part of both, both letters, so. All right, so at this point, council, you've heard public input, we've heard input from our our boards. This input then gets mixed in with all of the other discussions that we've had to date. And at this point, what we're looking to do is to have some discussion and formulate next steps, not in a voting fashion, but just to have some free-flow conversation, so we can do it formally at our next council meeting. So I'll go ahead and open it up to council for their thoughts and opinions on the input that you received tonight and the time that you've had to do your own research and formulate your own thoughts as we move forward here. Councilperson David, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just kind of want to go into the, you know, the the view of the long-range planning and then my views on this as well. You know, long-range planning took a perspective of what would you do if the the plot of land was blank and you were looking to build boathouses today? While I agree, we probably wouldn't put the boathouses there now, they're there, and they've been there forever, you know, a long time. They're they're historically significant. I do like the approach that the Historic Preservation Board has has brought forward. You know, assessing them and then figuring out what it takes to reconstruct them and and preserve them historically and then potentially take the next step of leasing them out. I think that's a prudent approach. You know, I want to say thanks to all the board members that that discussed this and all the council members that that took this on. I I felt as we talked through this last council meeting that we needed to get some additional input from those boards in light of what the position we're in with the leases. So I just want to say I appreciate it. My my approach would be the one that the Historic Preservation Board has put forward.
So just for clarification, Councilperson David, so with the historical board recommendation, that would be to leave it empty for a period of time while we assess those structures and make sure that they are sound and brought back to to a to a condition that that is agreed upon by all. Is that fair enough summation?
Yeah, in in a previous workshop, you know, I mentioned that, you know, there was a few goals that I was targeting for these for these boathouses. One is historic preservation, one is access for the residents of Windermere, and the last was equity. I think for the time being, the approach that Historic Preservation Board has has presented is is the most prudent approach for us to take.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Next up was Councilperson Martini.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, and everyone that has worked on this project. It is, it is a difficult situation regardless of what perspective you have. I I want to circle back to Ms. Huffman's letter. One of the main topics that she had was the the stressful behavior and nonsense that goes on at the existing parks that we have. And one of her main points was that she didn't want to create another issue like that. Obviously, we've been working very hard to curtail that at Fernwood Park. We're still dealing with, you know, how to how to corral that situation at Lake Street Park and forth to Magnolia. And so personally, I would not want to create another situation like that by opening up that space to public access. I do, my number one goal, as I've said all along, is to make sure that the boathouses stay there. They are historically significant, and I think we need to do whatever we can to preserve them going forward. Whether they stay leased or they stay empty remains to be seen. I'm fine with H P B's recommendation to have a cooling off period and to assess, appraise, assess the structures, find out what needs to be done to maintain them, and I would still like to see the opportunity for other town residents to have, you know, a lottery system to be able to lease the structures out. Yeah, I know the the revenue is not significant, but it is, you know, it's a revenue source that could fund other projects or even, you know, the maintenance of the structures themselves. And if we did a short-term lease, three years, et cetera, maybe, you know, that would open up opportunities for a significant number of people in town to have access to those structures or, you know, a boathouse on the lake going forward, so. That's my spiel. Oh, and for the record, tree board had no comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilperson Martini. As far as the length of time, so if 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 you were to move forward, if council were to to move forward in a direction to adopt those historical board recommendations, did you have thoughts on the length of time that they might be without, you know, they might be vacant while we assess them?
I would say minimum of six months. I think I think less than that is is not enough, you know, a year may be too much. You know, as as I think was Roger or Tony said, you know, three months from now, you know, they may feel feel differently, and C T Allen said that, you know, in the meantime, in her letter, in the meantime, if we do have a you know, a pause on things, you know, other options may come to light, which are even more preferable, so I would think at least six months.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. Councilperson David, you have your hand up.
I think that's what I was going to ask. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask a question. Do we even know how long it would take us to fix up the existing ones that need work, because that might be the good cooling time that we need, that if we if they were left vacant long enough for us to rehabilitate them back to to where they need to be? And then we start discussing at that point lease agreements and leasing them out. I just hate for them to stay empty too long because we do have the problems with the parks as it is, and I feel like that would be an easy target for teenagers to hang, and neighbors are going to really be upset over that. So I guess my question is, is, you know, could we do the period of time that it would take to get them up to standard, and how long would that be?
I don't want to, I don't, I'm not going to comment on any construction timelines. Tanya, do you want to add anything there?
Oh.
I was just going to tell you that in the current climate that we live in, this would be a pretty small project, and you'd probably be looking at different skilled craftsmen to have to come in and do some of that work. So it's really hard to tell how soon and how quickly we could get them out to perform those tasks. I mean, hopefully, within six months to ten months, we could get something going, but I don't want to promise you something when sometimes it's difficult to get those laborers out here to do, I mean, just look at the security cameras in the parks and how long it's taken to kind of get all of that stuff together. So just just something to think about. I'd hate to give you a timeframe and not be able to keep my word.
Yeah. My additional thing, Mayor, is Robert Smith, is that if we were to rehab those facilities, then we would have to provide a notice of termination of lease to those that are currently leasing the structures.
Correct. Yeah, I don't think that the one has anything to do with, you know, the direction that council's talking about this evening doesn't necessarily have anything to do with with our with our legal obligations with leaseholders. We would follow those either way to the letter of the law, so that would be just automatically factored in, I think, you know. But we can, we can also formalize that as we move forward with our formal discussion at the next Town Council meeting. I saw Councilperson Williams' hand up, and then I saw it down, so in or out?
I'm in. Um, yeah, the time period, I think, the assessment and then just trying to get the
I'm in. Yeah, the time period, I think the assessment and then just trying to get them up to snuff is going to take at least six months. So I think you just kind of let that go with how long it takes. Because I think it, we're going to find out that it's going to take a lot longer than we planned. And my whole thing is, what do we have to work with? We really don't know. Because none of us have been in it. We haven't had any contractors in to assess anything. Some of them are in great shape. Some of them look to be in poor shape. You know, and, and are those, you know, I don't want to say worth saving because I think they are. But are they worth saving to go into a lease piece? Maybe we end up with one or two that are just aesthetic. And we, and we trim them out and make them to where they're just that because they're not viable any other way. I think we just have so many unknowns that moving forward and going, okay, let's get in there. Let's assess everything, shut everything down and get a better handle on what we have to work with is pragmatic. Because that's, I mean, we just don't know what we're going to open up once we start.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilperson David, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to support what Councilman Williams just said, you know, just doing some back of the napkin scheduling here. You know, two months notice, two months assessment. You get assessment and, and design, you'll get three months in permitting and then, you know, three to six months in construction. We're a year out the way it is already. So I think if, you know, following that approach where we just let the, let the rehabilitation drive the, the timeline, I think is prudent.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Seth has his actual hand up, not even a virtual hand.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going on the right track. I don't know if there's necessarily more so of a cooling period as needing those assessments and hard quotes. And also kind of running parallel with that, we have what's going on with Bird Island and Fernwood Park and kind of those changes at the same time. You know, because I wouldn't throw out the, out the window completely if we can find solutions on those other parks of, you know, using it in some sort of passive type manner. But maybe what I would recommend is, you know, because this will allow the historic board to kind of take a little bit of a breather is be in proper preparation of getting an RFQ out, you know, maybe in six months. And then from there, the timelines are just going to take care of themselves. And as councilperson David said, we're, we're be a year before having discussion again on what we're going to do with it or a final decision with it once they're all up to par. And maybe by that time, some of those parallel movements of, you know, give us an idea as we've gone through another spring and summer at those various parks and, you know, maybe Bird Island's got some resolution, so on and so forth.
Thank you, councilperson Seth. Wise thoughts. All right. Council, any further discussion or thoughts on the topic at hand here? Councilperson Martini.
Mayor, just thinking forward, if we do decide to go forward, I mean, this is something we can talk at the council meeting, of course. But it would be nice if we could put up like a post and rail, you know, like the post and rail type of fence that we have at other places, you know, if they are going to stay vacant, maybe just as a visual barrier to keeping folks out. In the meantime, but, you know, we can cross that, that bridge when we get to it or if we get to it at the council meeting.
Yeah, it's not a bad thought. You know, obviously we can make some, make some adjustments and tweaks there in terms of, of delineating that area. And also I think as we do, so, you know, obviously there's pros and cons to this. Certainly the pros are going to be that we do, we, we've clearly got work that's going to be taking place at Fernwood as we have our new ordinances in place to turn that into just a private boat ramp versus a park. Then we've also got everything that's going on in terms of the proposed changes at Bird Island. That'll take some time to play out as well. Certainly, I, I know that not everyone on the call isn't certainly in support of changes at the boathouse, but I do know that everyone on this call is definitely probably in support of some changes at Bird Island. So my hope is that we can all be unified in support of, of our commissioners' efforts there as well as a lot of other individuals who have put a ton of time into making some good sensible changes out at Bird Island that I think will benefit our entire community. So not, not only from a life and safety aspect, from also from a peaceful enjoyment aspect. Councilperson Williams, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I also think we need to go ahead and plan on and look at the costs of going ahead and putting some cameras there. We have power. Because whether they end up being leased out or left vacant, that's going to be part of, we're going to need it. Because as people figured out, we're, and we've had it in the, Mr. Kegler also had the problem with people using Natco to, to get out of there. So maybe we should go ahead and go and look at, okay, what's the cost to go ahead and put a couple of cameras there? Most of the boathouses already have power. So I think it'll be, you know, less of a, a deal to get done. But go ahead and, and plan on putting those in.
Making some notes here. Thanks. All right. All right. So councilperson David.
Just a quick question for Tanya. Does the existing park already have camera, cameras in that or is that part of the program?
Palmer Park, you mean? No, Palmer Park does not have cameras.
Okay, I was just wondering, it, it may be an easy solution to just put another camera array and skew it towards the boathouses, but mix that if we don't have cameras there. Thanks.
Now, that would be, that would be a new install. Councilperson Martini.
Yeah, Mayor, you had mentioned the Orange County items that they're going to be discussing. I, I know, I think that meeting has changed the schedule.
It has.
For the, for the benefit of everybody that's on the call tonight, can, can we update the meeting? I think it was supposed to be March 8th at Orange County Chambers, but it's not. Is it March 22nd, Robert? Does anybody know what the?
There's so many meetings that I have right now with Orange County, one being the one on the 28th for the Winston Sales Tax. But I do believe they punted it either to the 28th or the 29th of March.
Will, I can confirm that as we're, as we're talking here, or maybe somebody who has a minute can check even the, the town website and the town social media, I believe has that updated date, but one of us can find it and we can get that to everybody.
Standby. I'm looking for it.
Thank you, Tanya. Appreciate that. Council, any additional input on the primary topic? And we'll, we'll get the date for everybody before we sign off here.
March 22nd is the actual rehearing date.
Outstanding. All right. So March 22nd, and that's, you know, going to be a very important meeting. It's going to require a lot of support to move this initiative across the goal line. You know, it's not a slam dunk by any stretch of the imagination, and I think that everybody on this call will benefit from, from the changes there. So certainly looking for everyone's support on that item. So council, I think if, if it's okay, I will summarize what, what I've heard this evening. You guys can nod in agreement if I, if I say it right. If not, please correct me and then we'll give staff direction from there. I definitely heard a desire to request that we get a proposal in front of us for cameras and split rail fence. And then the other takeaway from this evening is the desire to move forward more in line with the Historical Preservation Board's recommendations to update the structures, not to remove any structures. And then to have a period of time while we rehabilitate those structures where we can revisit the, the lottery type system or whether we want to leave them as is. Okay. And when I say as is, I mean, they would be empty, I guess. So is that, do I see everybody nod? Okay. All right. Good. So just in summation, of course, this is, is not an actual vote that will take place at our council meeting and in the formal setting with the appropriate motions. Council Ramos, any snags or anything that you see there from our discussion this evening?
No, Mayor, everything sounds good.
Robert, anything on your end?
No, we will be ready to have everything for a formal motion on March 8th.
Is that direction clear in terms of what you need for staff?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So Tanya, anything from your end?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. And Dorothy?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. All right then. I think that that
I think Mr. David has his hand up.
Tony, did you have your hand up again, sir?
I just had a quick question, Mayor. Do we have to wait till we pass the formal resolution, I assume, to give notice to the current tenants?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Believe that gets us the information that we need on this particular portion of the agenda. Any, any mayor or council liaison reports that anyone wants to add anything for the good of the order? All right. Oh, I see one from Ms. David. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to add, we are going to put some ordinances before the town council for Parks and Recs because we've had some issues with people using the Windermere Rec Center Pavilion for work related things and advertising the signs in the, in the park. So we, we asked the, the town manager, we asked Robert to get us some ordinances that we could put in place. And so I believe they're going to be on the agenda to be read on our next council for the, I believe they have to have two readings. So, but it's been an issue. I've even driven by and, and, and seen it myself, but I just thought it was just a party, like a birthday party. I didn't realize that they were actually advertising it as a business. So it's a workout thing and there's a couple of other things going on. So anyway, we just want to keep the parks as, you know, we, we do allow tennis, but that, that goes to the town. So that's okay. But these new ordinances will, will keep the outsiders out, unfortunately. Fortunately and unfortunately, it's not that we want to keep people away, but we just don't want them using our parks for our business. So.
Well, I think, you know, the parks remain open to all. But we want to make sure that the amenities are, are town centric in, in terms of making sure that everyone who pays for all of those things has the ability to use them and that, that the parks don't, you know, that we want the parks to be an attribute to our community and not a detriment. And sometimes if things get out of hand, we've seen that they can actually become a detriment. So
Yes.
These are the things that we're trying to toe that line and it's a, it's a narrow one, but we're doing our best.
Yes.
All right.
And then pet test, don't forget that. That's March 5th. First Saturday, March from 10 to 3.
Excellent. Good, good, good pet fest. And then any additional staff reports? Any additional council input? All right. Seeing none. If there's anything else for the good of the order, we will adjourn our workshop at, at 6:43 PM. Thank you all for attending.